I'd like to call this meeting to order. I would like to ask Pastor Harris Franklin to lead us in the pledge, or Harold Franklin, I apologize Pastor, or the indication, I apologize for getting that wrong too. It's not a good start this morning, is it supervisors?
Oh, we thank you Lord for a beautiful weekend we've enjoyed. We thank you for a beautiful day today. And Lord, we just direct your attention now to this council meeting that you would be with each one of these who have to make decisions for our county and for our people here. Lord, you would just bless them with wisdom and with knowledge and with peace in their hearts to make the right decisions for what needs to be done in this area. So we just thank you so much and we praise you and bless you in Jesus' holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. If I can ask Supervisor Hildy Angus to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to call for an executive session to be held February 17, 2015 at 9:30 a.m. or at the conclusion of the regular meeting, whichever is later, for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS Section 38-431.03, subsections A, 3, and 4, to discuss items noticed in the agenda with an asterix.
Shall we move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the agenda. Item 1, discussion of pending or contemplating litigation claims and demands. Attorney Ekstrom, is there anything at this time?
There's nothing started, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item 2, committee and legislative reports. I will start to my right. Supervisor Angus, any reports?
None today.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Watson?
Not this morning.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Thank you very much supervisors. I also have nothing to report. Item 3, county administrator's report. As my understanding, Supervisor Ekstrom, excuse me, I promoted you Bill, Supervisor Hendricks, Supervisor Hendricks, Director Duranzo will be handling your report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, I'd like to have our community services director and workforce development come and give a short presentation on extremely successful and beneficial job fairs that they've been having recently.
Excellent. The Chair will recognize Suzy Duranzo. I've been wanting to say that though for the last month, the Chair will recognize.
Good morning Supervisor Steve Moss and members of the board. I'm pleased to be here this morning to be able to give you a bird's eye view of what happened in the last month for community services. But before I give my short presentation, I would like if you would permit me, at least at this time, to present my staff, who is the team behind everything that happened in the last month. Today, I only have three of them here, they're not the only staff who worked with me. Unfortunately, some of them are sick and some of them are out in Bullhead and Lake Havasaw, holding the fort in our offices there. But for now, I would like to introduce the team that's behind everything that happened in the last month for our job fair and rapid employment and rapid activities, rapid response activities. We have Donna Smith, could you please stand? Becky Smathers, our program representatives, and also Sandy Skousen. And for those people who are not here but still members of the team, if you would permit me, at least mention their name because they've worked so hard in the last month to be able to pull this through together. In the Kingman workforce staff, we have Jen Miles, Mary Mandola, Jan Adams, Melinda Mouser. My administrative staffs, Fran Caldwell, Christina Register, and Kathy Etzel. In the Bullhead City staff, we have Terry Bond and Stephanie Collinsworth. And in the Lake Havasaw office, we have Lauren Farshwell, Farshler. So that is the team that's behind what happened. And just to give you a bird's eye view of what happened in the last month, I would like to give a short PowerPoint presentation for you. Mojave County Community Services Department conducted a rapid response and rapid employment activities, particularly for the mineral park and gold mine, gold road mines. As you know, Mojave County receives federal funding from Department of Labor for the Workforce Investment Act. One of our programs is considered the Dislocated Workers Program, which is actually designed to ensure that workers who are laid off at no fault of their own would receive assistance for us to be able to go back to work as soon as possible. There are several activities in the Dislocated Workers Program. We provide rapid response, we provide rapid employment, and in certain circumstances, we provide training to strengthen the skills of the individual to match the employer's needs in our area. What happened was in December 29, we actually found, or we have several people come to our one-stop center with their letter, with their layoff letters. And immediately, our one-stop center responded and provided assistance in getting them their unemployment insurance and coming up with the resume and job search. The same day, the HR director worked with us and provided the notice that several people will be laid off, and that notice was then presented to the Arizona Department of Economic Security. On December 30, a day after we knew this was going to happen, we mobilized everything we could in our department to be able to stop, to start the rapid response activities. Decisions were made, together with our partners in our community, to hold the job fairs. And with all my staff, we decided to provide assistance to all the miners who came and help them create their resumes, online applications, and then prepare for the job fair. The one-stop system is a partnership of different members of our community, and we mobilized everybody we could in our community that's part of the system to be able to plan the job fairs that we had on January 7, 8, 9, and January 22. Then on January 19, we were also informed that the gold mine, the gold road mine closed and laid off 160 people at that time. And together, on January 22, we did a job fair for both companies. This is an example of what we did for our rapid response orientation. During our orientation, it was really a partnership with Western Arizona Council of Government, Department of Economic Security, Mojave Community College, and Mojave County Workforce Development Division, in trying to get everybody in this auditorium to provide them all the information that they may need to be able to transition to a job immediately. At the same time, with the assistance of the federal and state agencies, Commerce Department, Department of Economic Security, they were able to provide connections to us for different mining companies all over the country, and we were able to mobilize approximately 40 companies, 40 employers who came to the job fair. Now, as you also know, 40 of them joined us, 25 came onsite. And for those employers who were not able to come onsite for the job fairs, they provided us with information on the online application, the jobs opportunities that may be available, and connected with us so we could connect individuals that have the skill set that they needed for their companies. I'm not going to mention all the names, it's on the slides. We have the mining company, a lot of them were there. We have local employers, even our own sheriff department came. We have other employers who responded to the job fair that we had. The job fair was held here in Kingman, we had it at the mezzanine at the Sowaro office. And we would like to thank the administration for providing the building for us. It was a little chaotic with all the people coming in, but it was worth it for being able to help them. This is what it looked like. Pictures can tell everything of what happened in the last month. This auditorium was filled with miners, and we also understand that not everybody were from the mining companies that were closed down. We were able to attract also people who were underemployed or unemployed who heard about the job fair, and they came, and we welcomed them. So several mining companies flew in to Las Vegas and to Mojave County and set up their shop, they came in with their banners, they came in with their HR people, they came here with their, some of them their key people who would be doing the hiring, and right there, they did interviews and they actually met with people who came. These are the pictures that we had during the job fairs. It was really a vibrant activity that we had, and I think the people from the mining, the people who were laid off were very pleased with the service that we provided during the job fair. What's important to us was how many people have we served? At the end of the day, people are asking us, how many people actually came to see you? The slides would show you that we, people, approximately 403 people came to all the job fairs that we had. Between the mineral park and the gold mine, there were 443 people laid off, but we were able to attract most of them to come to the four-day job fair that we had here in this area. The also important question that was asked of us is how many people were hired? It's good that we were able to pull in some people here and the companies, how many people were actually hired? Part of our job is really to survey these companies that we invited and ask them, how many people have you actually gotten from our community? And like the slides in front of you, Molly Corp actually had three hires starting Monday and three more that they're interviewing. Pinto Valley Mine, they were able to identify five of them. Our own sheriff department probably were able to attract 17 people to go to their detention officer testing. Laren met 66 candidates, two started last week, they continued to interview and hire them. Empire Cat offered one position and two more pending. Kinrose Gold considered five candidates from the pool that we have provided to them. Azarko made two offers, and some of them are in process, more. Cascades actually are in the process of interviewing and sending them to pre-hire requirements. And this morning, we were able to get information that two more companies, Barrett Gold offered 18 positions to 18 of our people. Anglo Gold, they have seven people that they have offered positions. We will continue to survey them, and I think this, all these employers who came are very happy that we were able to match some of these laid off people to the jobs that they currently have in their company. We will continue to survey these people, we'll come back to give you final numbers. It's just been a month since we started this process, so we're happy that people are getting hired for some of these positions. The center of all this is our one-stop centers. It's one of those things, some of those places that they didn't know until the job fairs, that we actually have a one-stop career center. And it's located in this building, it's a comprehensive site, we have our partners, the state, federal, and other agencies housed in the one-stop. We serve approximately 150 people with resumes and applications during that period of time. Approximately 30 of them got enrolled in our Dislocated Workers Program, of which we sent them to trainings, and we also provided assistance for relocation. If they were hired by a company out of our state, we also provide relocation assistance to some of them. I think this is an opportunity for our community to get together, and we're so proud that this community got together, pulled together at these times where our economy is very much affected. And behind all of this is your staff, Mojave County Community Development, Workforce Development, and I think I'd like to say this is your tax dollars at work and your federal funds coming back to your community. If you have any other further questions, we'll be here to answer them, if you have any, please.
I'll mix it up and start from my left this time. Supervisor Johnson, any questions? Supervisor Watson?
Just a comment. Fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Bishop, any questions or comments?
No, just thank you very much, you're amazing, and I appreciate what you do for us.
Supervisor Angus?
Thank you so much for this update. I really had no idea how many people you were able to help and how quickly you guys mobilized and got into action. Good job.
And I'll echo my fellow supervisors' statements. You guys have been outstanding, your support staff has been outstanding, your department is always top drawer. I really appreciate the meetings you've invited to me to on occasion, and I have to say that Mojave County is very well-served by your department and the volunteers and employees you have working with you. So thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much. Going on, item 4, approval of the December 15, 2014 Board of Supervisors Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion?
Shall we move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Going on to call to the public. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion, oh, excuse me, one more paper. Enacted upon one with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. And by the way, I jumped the gun, I'm supposed to do the call to the public before I do the consent agenda. It has been a very long weekend folks, and I do apologize. Going on to call to the public, I'll start with Mark Shaver. And Mark, I know you've done this before, but when you step up, if you can state your name and your address for the record before your comments. And for those of you who are waiting to be called, that same process should be followed.
My name is Mark Shaver, I live at 4054 West Hiller Drive, Meadview, Arizona. I attended the January 20th Subcommittee meeting, and as you can see, I went prepared. I've been prepared for the last five years for that one particular meeting. And the meeting went well, after a rough start, so well that I nearly tore the pages from my books trying to keep up with the meeting. And it wasn't, and I video recorded the whole meeting, just so everyone knows, and those of you that are on my page at the number of those Facebook political pages know that I posted videos of these meetings. And it wasn't until after the meeting, and a couple of weeks down the road, that we finally got to the meeting. The truth of the matter is, that meeting was so structured that it did not leave any time for public comments or discussion. I got two questions in, but it was so controlled, and when we actually look at it, and I asked the people who actually sent me emails and phone calls, what did you think about the changes in the general plan? Well, it happened so fast, I never got a chance to actually keep up. I sat there listening, but the meeting went well. We blew through 120 pages of the general plan in a little hour, in a little over half an hour. 120 pages of policies with shoulds and mayes. How can you have a public discussion about the changes of those plans in that timeframe? It cannot be done. I had two questions answered in there, you know, but like I said, I spent five years for a half hour of public discussion, there was no discussion. And there's video to do that, but the meeting went well. So well that I went and tore the pages out of my book trying to keep up. That's a fact, and there's video to prove it. The problem with the word "may," and it's a very interesting word, because it creates the illusion of accountability without the responsibility. I asked them, what's the difference between should and may? Well, the appropriateness of "may" is whether or not the county has the ability to fulfill the policies that are in the book. If they can't, it's changed to "may." Well, we elected you to take the hard calls, just like in those last six seconds of the first half. Beautiful, I love that. Well anyways, if you're replacing the word "should" with the word "may," you're escaping the responsibilities that you have for fulfilling those responsibilities. It's tough. If it's a liability, then why have a policy in the first place? Anyways, it's up for view, and it is a problem. And one of the major problems is, the only people there that represent the five districts were people from District 1 and District 4. I still look towards you to inspire those same people that elected you to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Shaver. If I can ask the county administrator and follow up to that, there are additional meetings planned, are they not, on the general plan review?
I know they have extensive meetings planned.
Right. So it's my hope that some of these meetings will be more involved. Going on, we have Tom Duranzo who wishes to speak on consent item number 10. Mr. Duranzo?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom Duranzo from Kingman, Vice Chairman of the Western Arizona Vocational Education, J-TED District, and I'm here to speak on the continuing issues with the Department of Revenue and centrally assessed property and their effect on school districts in Mojave County. I really wish and hope that you will support the defense of property taxes collections in Mojave County for school districts. Every time the Department of Revenue has an issue, they have a big effect on school districts. We have a very small school district that waived J-TED, but the effect of Department of Revenue actions on other school districts in Mojave County can be quite devastating. The mineral park issue would have a major effect on school district budgets and needs to be defended. Follows up on the pipeline settlement, the Department of Revenue obviously made errors there, and, but the school districts and the children in Mojave County, in those school districts, are paying the price for these type of issues. I fully supported the idea that the legislature should make, when the Department of Revenue makes errors or makes judgments and devastate school district budgets, that the school district should be held harmless by the legislature. I'm not going to hold my breath waiting for that to happen. But I'm also a member of the Arizona School Board Association Board of Directors, and I was just at a meeting last Friday where the pipeline settlement was discussed throughout northern Arizona, where all the counties that were affecting all the school districts. And I would hope that you will continue to support the idea that we want to defend property taxes that have direct effect on school districts in this county. And thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Duranzo. Item, excuse me, Stephen Robinson to speak on item 13. Will you step down, Mr. Robinson? Again, your name and your address.
For the record, I am Stephen Robinson at 3439 North Bowie Road. And before I get to item 13, which I may not have time for, I first want to thank Administrator Hendricks for explaining the $15 million amount in the trust fund. I was seeing it strictly from a financial accountability, which is treated as a debt service fund, when legally, the money's set aside for the jail debt repayment is legally a lease purchase, and hence it is a capital equipment, capital purchase fund. Am I correct on that understanding?
I...
That's okay.
I thank you for recognizing that, and yes, I do believe you're correct in that.
Thank you. Secondly, I want to compliment the board for handling this jail, the county courthouse program in a two-step process, where first you're putting out a bid for an architectural firm to design the building. I do not believe the design-build plan is as efficient as having a two-step approach. I want to thank the board for that decision last week. Shortly after, and third, shortly after the last board meeting, Arizona Tax Research Association came out with their annual report for the counties, and it was fairly damning of several counties, including Mojave County. In page 5 of the report, they point out that Mojave County underreported their fiscal 14 general fund balance by $11.2 million, or 86 percent. What they say is that the counties that underreported do it under a legal interpretation, that these counties are not required to show the cash they do not spend, do not plan to spend. That's a legal interpretation that is not supported by the Auditor General's Office, who has supported Attra's position that the law requires all cash to be reported in the fund. So that's one problem with, that they pointed out, is that according to Auditor General's Office, you are required, the county is required to report every dollar of general fund balances. I'm seeing 40 seconds left, I don't...
Make it fast, Mr. Robinson. And when you're done, you can send me a copy of the Attra report.
Yes, I'll do that. The one comment they made about the TV district was, the amount budgeted for the district is nearly eight times more than the actual amount necessary to fund the district. This has been, had the attention of supervisors and the public, that it's a form of overtaxation when you have money sit in the account that will pay the bills, and then you turn around and tax the people. One last point, going back to Attra, disclosing all the reserves is a form of transparency that the county should take. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, just so the other supervisors see it, the number 13, which supervisor, excuse me, which Mr. Robinson never got to, he was actually vocalizing support for number 13.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Going on to consent item 16, we have a person who'd like to speak, Joy LaFrance. Joy, or Mrs. LaFrance, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Joy LaFrance, 19001 Choya Canyon Ranch Road in Wikiup, Arizona. And I applied to split my property. I was approached by the owner of the ranch that runs the cattle on the ranch, he wanted to buy part of the property to put a well in for his cattle. The property is already split by the road, there's no change whatsoever in the looks of the property or anything. I don't know if you can see this. Does that work? Oh yeah, okay. There's the road, there's the road right there. And that's the property split, there's no change at all. We're going to put our home on the right side, and he's going to put a well on the left side for his cattle. The property south of us on 70 acres, they launched a campaign against us email, but their property's for sale, they're moving out, they don't even have any development there. I don't know why they're complaining, it's not going to hurt anybody at all, not going to change anything at all. But anyway, they stopped, they filed a complaint. We had already gone through two committees with approval. I already hired the surveyor that they told me I had to hire, and now I got a call Friday that I had to show up here and defend myself.
Is that all you have, Ms. LaFrance?
I didn't get any copies of the paperwork or anything to research anything, I was just called on Friday.
Your picture is worth 1,000 words, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Going on, that is the conclusion of those people who wish to speak to the call to the public and/or on consent agenda items. Have I missed anybody? Seeing none. Going on to the consent agenda. The following items listed under consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Starting at my right, Supervisor Angus, do you have any items you would like to remove?
Not this morning.
Supervisor Bishop?
I do not.
Supervisor Watson?
Item 16.
Item 16 is removed. And Supervisor Johnson?
11.
Item 11 is removed. May I have a motion? Oh, and I have item 43 that I would like to remove.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the consent minus 11, 16, 43.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we'll go on to item 11. Consent to the assignment and assumption of Sarah's house leased by Kingman A to abuse people and authorize the chairman of the Board of Supervisors to sign the agreement, assumption, and consent agreement. I'm Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to get my news from the newspaper, but newspaper had an article saying that this business was out of business, or had been out of business for a short period of time, and that their numbers picked up. According to our contract, we're supposed to be notified of any, when they stop business. I think this was through the contract, I guess that's where I'm at, this business has stopped, and that now they're looking to pass it on. I don't think that's who we cut a contract with. I think we're one of the few counties that has more than one facility. I think we're getting into the supporting a business, a private business, when we can use the other one that's already there. I think the sheriff's department uses them now.
Okay. Thank you for those comments Supervisor Johnson. Is there anyone here to speak on item 11? Is Matt Smith present? Would you like to say a few words?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Matt Smith is our county attorney, for those of you listening who do not know that. not know that.
Preferably, if there are any questions, particularly with Supervisor Johnson, I would tell you that the newspaper article was not accurate. Sarah's House never actually did close. There were some issues going on, however. There were problems where they were down a number of volunteers, they were down a lot of board members. There were some issues with some bills that were being paid or not being paid timely. I believe for a while, the water was turned off. That problem was resolved, mainly through the work of Gary Christopher and Jason Miller, who are on the Sarah's House board. So the services never were completely interrupted. Sarah's House is still operating, although there have been problems. CAP, which has been around for a long time, Suzanne Clark is the director, is here today. We met with the board. My office conducted a meeting between the two boards and thought it would be a perfect marriage in order to continue services. CAP, of course, is a domestic violence shelter who also specializes in sexual assault and provides counseling to those types of victims and works well with our office, and we have a great relationship with them. And CAP is agreeing not only to take over the lease, but to continue the main services, which Sarah's House did, namely, to allow law enforcement to do the forensic interviews of children of child abuse, child sexual abuse, as well as adults who are the victims of sexual assault. So the forensic interviews will still be done by law enforcement at the building, as has always taken place. And additionally, the sexual assault nurse examiners will continue to do the exams of adult sexual assault victims and children right there at Sarah's House. So those functions will continue, although CAP will be taking over the lease.
If I can ask County Attorney Matt Smith, as I understand your comments, then this item is supported by yourself and the county attorney's office?
It is, especially because I think it is essential for our office and the successful prosecution of these cases to allow the interviews and the exams to be done at the same place. It's much less traumatic for the victims and their families. And of course, this particular building services Bullhead City and Kingman. Havasu, for the most part, uses Haven as their facility, although we obviously have a good working relationship with Haven and Mary Lou O'Connell as well, so.
Thank you, County Attorney Smith. Starting at my left, Supervisor Johnson, do you have any follow-up questions?
Yes, I do. I guess the first question is, it was alleged in this newspaper article that you're a cheapskate and don't pay your full cost for your, for the services you receive. Is there a problem with, is somebody exaggerating this, that the county doesn't pay their bills for the investigations? Says something like, you're paid $385, it costs $850, and...
No, I don't, I hope they didn't call me a cheapskate in the article. I don't think I was mentioned. Actually, what happened was, was that Mary Lou O'Connell's organization, which I know you're very familiar with Supervisor Johnson, Haven and Sarah's House came to me about a year ago, right before the budget process, and said that they wanted to raise the cost for the exams. At the time, the county was paying $350 per exam, and we agreed and went through county procurement, and the price was raised. So now, at this time, every exam done by either Haven, which our office ultimately is responsible in our budget for paying for these exams for either adult or children victims, we now pay $650 per exam. So that money will go to, continue to be paid to Haven, and will be continued to be paid for exams that are done by Sarah Center slash CAP.
All right, and that covers the total cost, so we're not, nobody's subsidizing the county attorney's investigations.
Correct.
I guess the problem that I have with this is not with the, is it all the problems you listed, plus an embezzlement, I think, went on there? The building appears to be in disrepair right now with broken windows. I think this is a, well, it's good to have two, and it's good to have one on this location. The other ones are private, and they're on private property, being run by private people and a private organization, and this is being run on county property, where it really cuts down on your, you know, a lot of your overhead. And they don't seem to be taking care of the building, and pure the lease, the building's supposed to be torn down if it gets into, you know, if the contract runs out. I guess that's my, my problem with, I think we're subsidizing a private business that's had quite a bit of time to show that they could make it, and now you're going into another business that actually gets away from, doesn't, I mean, it still does the same thing, but it's taking additional obligations on. I don't know, it's looking at the contract if we have the adequate insurance and those things that we need there.
Under the lease as written, CAP, and before the county was actually insuring those buildings, because you had Katherine Hayden Rock's Center, the shed that was out there, and Sarah's House, but CAP is actually assuming the liability for insuring the building. There's not going to be any county money being used to finance any of the services that go on there. And I would also point out, and I have some bias because I was on the original board, but the building and that is completely privately funded and owned by citizens and contributions throughout Mojave County. So the county did not invest any money into that building. That building was funded by fundraisers, donations, contractors locally and everything else. The building is actually owned outright. So the only involvement the county has is, is that the building is on county land, so.
Supervisor Watson, any questions or comments?
Actually, I have several comments to make. I've got quite an extensive history with both the Kingman Aid to Abuse People and Sarah's House has been one of the people that lent and gave money to that project. So I'm pretty well aware of all the issues, and I believe that the Kingman Aid to Abuse People will be actually lending in a very essential and necessary service to the community. So with that in mind, I'm going to make a motion to consent to the assignment and the assumption of Sarah's House leased by the Aid to Abuse People.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Now, before we call for a vote, and just to make sure everyone has a chance to have their two cents if they care to, Supervisor Bishop, do you have any other comments?
I just want to echo what Supervisor Watson said. I've been a big supporter of Sarah's House and CAP for as long as I can remember.
Supervisor Angus?
Nope, I second it.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, the only suggestion I would have, if this is going to move forward, is that the lease be renegotiated and looked at. That's an old lease that's been in there to make sure that we're covered and everything it doesn't have anything to do with, like Attorney Matt Smith said, you know, they've assumed the liability, but now that's gone through our legal stuff. I would say that if the board moves ahead, then I would ask that you look at a new lease on it.
Mr.?
If I could, County Attorney Smith, the lease has been prepared by your office or at least reviewed by your office?
Yes, I anticipated this particular problem, and, you know, obviously, our office has a vested interest in keeping these services going. We're supporters of CAP. I'm a big fan of CAP. But personally, personally selfishly, for our office's prosecution, I was very concerned that the services that Sarah's House provided in the past, the same exams and the forensic interviewing would be continued. So I actually was involved in the negotiation between the parties, as was Mr. Ekstrom, and I had Bob Taylor prepare a lease, and then we sent it to CAP, and Jeff Goldberg, who's a local attorney with Brooks Goldberg, Bruno Goldberg and Brooks, also looked it over. And then it got back to us, and we took another look at it. So I've had a chance to look over the lease. Bob Taylor looked over the lease. So what I gave to you at the start of the meeting today, and of course, the board can take all the time it wants to look it over, it was a lease that was prepared by our office and looked over by multiple attorneys. So it is a new lease, which specifically sets out the duties and the obligations, so.
Thank you very much, Attorney.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, then I would ask for a continuance, because I haven't seen this lease.
All right. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the pending motion on the floor? All right, seeing none. I will say, Attorney Matt Smith, that when you say for very selfish reasons, the translation I hear is in the interest of the law-abiding taxpayers, because that's what your office is doing when they intend to keep your office running in an efficient manner, including the collection of evidence. So thank you very much for your time and your efforts.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It's four to one. Going on to item 16. Adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-022, rezone of assessor's parcel number 252-02-179 from AR 36A Agricultural Residential 36-acre Minimum Lot Size Zone to AR/18A Agricultural Residential 18-acre Minimum Lot Size Zone, to allow creation of two residential parcels in the Wikiup vicinity, north of East Bogles Ranch Road and south of South Gullywasher Road, bisected by South Cowboy Hat Road, Mojave County, Arizona. I believe this is pulled by Supervisor Watson, and I'll turn it over to you after I make a comment that I really like those names.
Thank you, Chairman Moss. Just one slight correction, that's Bogles.
Bogles, there you go. I like the name even more.
Motion for discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to give you a kind of a brief history of this piece of property. This was originally part of a very large ranch, the Wagon Bow Ranch. It's a ranch in which I've got personal history involved, and I'm certainly glad the applicant is here today, because there's a number of things I'd like to address. When the folks out there that purchased those large parcels of properties, and we're talking up to 180 acres, down to a minimum of 40, the spirit and expectation of those purchases, I believe those people were believing that after they purchased those properties, they would remain large parcel to lend itself to the open country and protect their investment. And with that, my vote this morning would have been to deny this item. But with the applicant in attendance this morning, if I may, ask that applicant to the podium.
Absolutely. And I'm sorry, ma'am, if you give me a moment, I can, if you can state your name for the record again.
Joy LaFrance. Joy LaFrance.
Joy LaFrance.
Yes.
Ms. LaFrance, I've got a question for you, and I think you've heard my statements.
Mm-hmm.
And I was just up there Saturday, looking around, making sure that we, I knew that each and every part of this.
I wanted to make one correction. On the east side of the ranch, there are several 10-acre parcels that was in the original ranch. So there are 10-acre parcels out there.
There are, there are at some distance away, yes, some smaller parcels.
Yes, it's on the ranch, though.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, let's not jump the gun here.
No, I'm not.
Okay. Now, prior to your coming this morning and speaking to the, open to the public, you indicated to me that the reason that you wanted this parcel split was to split the parcel in order for the well to be developed on the east portion of the split?
Well, we were, yes, uh-huh, yes.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, already an existing well north of our property that Mr. Derringer uses for his cattle, and it has failed or something, and the people that own that land will not allow him to develop that.
Okay.
Because he's, he could have used it, you know, if it kept going, but that's why he approached us, to put, it's only a few feet away from the area, so he's sure there'd be good water there.
Okay, so Mr. Derringer came to you?
Yes, they approached us.
Requesting this property?
Yes.
Be split, and that they, Mr. Derringer will be purchasing it from you?
Yes.
I'd like to, at this time, postpone my decision on this and table this item for just two weeks till the next meeting, for further information to come. And so that'd be my motion, is to table it for two weeks. I'd like to get some more information, and I'd like to talk to several more people before we make a decision on this.
Okay.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's.
Thank you, Ms. LaFrance.
So County Administrator Hendricks and our clerk, if you can bring this back to our next meeting in approximately two weeks. Going item to item 43, which I pulled, and I pulled, and I will concede at the suggestion of Supervisor Watson, to approve, and the motion is to approve the retirement of Mojave County Sheriff K-9 Thor to his handler, Sam Ruiz. Is Officer Ruiz here? Good. Oh, no, there he is.
Retired.
He's retired. Well, I'll tell you this, sir, officer or deputy, the reason is to applaud both the service of Thor and Deputy Ruiz, and I hope that you'll take back to both him and to Thor Mojave County's deep appreciation for the service that he has performed. We didn't want to just pass this on, I did not want to just pass this on a consent agenda. The Mojave County Sheriff's Office and their K-9 units do a tremendous service to Mojave County, and they deserved a few words of recognition.
Officer, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion from Supervisor Watson and seconded by Supervisor Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I like the idea of the sheriff's deputy and the dog retiring at the same time. I hope they go fishing. All right, going on to the public hearings. Item 49. I'm opening a public hearing to discuss and possible action, Ray, adoption of Mojave County Ordinance Number 2015-01, outlining reclaimed water use requirements, which is continued from our last meeting. I have nobody who has filled out a request to speak form, but since the public hearing is open, is there anyone who would like to speak on this item before I close it? Seeing none. I am now closing the public hearing. Is there any comments or questions from the supervisors? Seeing none.
I do.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson, thank you.
Okay. One's a technicality. Usually when we do public hearings, we put on a consent to call for a, for a public hearing. I don't know if we followed it. I want to make sure that, you know, if this goes through, we've, we've done everything according to law. I don't know if Bill would cover that, or Mr. Ekstrom, or the clerk.
Attorney Ekstrom, if you have any comments on that issue?
Only that I would leave the, Mr. Chairman, I believe the board called for a public hearing when it was on the agenda last time. I'm sure it's been noticed, I...
I don't believe that's what the motion was, the continuance, wasn't it?
We did continue it last go-around, primarily to generate more opportunity for feedback. Now, I'm not sure if our requirements from last go-around met the requirements of the ordinance statutes. I have to rely on Attorney Ekstrom for that in his office. Attorney Ekstrom, do you require additional time?
I think, Mr. Chairman, in the interest of getting it done absolutely right, we should proceed as we ordinarily do with ordinances, and give a 30-day notice for a public hearing.
Okay.
We'll administer that for you.
Okay, so do you want a continuance for another 30-day period?
Well, I think we'll call, we'll call for a, call for a public hearing. That way, you don't have the problem with continuing.
All right, excellent. We'll call, we're going to put this done for 30 days or more out, for purposes of doing the call for a public hearing, to make sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. We will also give the public additional time. I will explain for our viewing audience and those people in the audience of what the purpose is behind this ordinance, so if they engages their thinkers in between now and then, is in 2017, the odds are very probable that water shortages will be declared at the, our almost 20-year-long drought. That shortages will initially affect the Phoenix, Tucson, and Southern California areas. A year or so after that, it'll affect our area. And this is an effort on the part of the Board of Supervisors to create a surplus of fresh water in areas of Mojave County. So if and when those shortages ever hit Mojave County, we'll have a pool to take those shortages out of, which will not affect our residential landowners, our homes essentially. So our folks, our citizens' way of life will not be unduly disrupted. It's also good conservation and land management, and as supposing Mother Nature smiles upon us, and we have several wet years coming up, in that unlikely event, a lease will have created additional sources of fresh water for purposes of funding future business and residential expansion. So I think it's in the public interest that this pass. It'll have no effect on residential homeowners. It's targeted to man-made lakes, very large, three-plus acre common areas, parks, sporting fields, things of those, that nature. So that's the shorthand. Is there any other commentary? I see a document which has been handed to me by Supervisor Angus and Supervisors Bishop by email, and I'll ask the clerk of the board to comment on it, because it looks like there was a notice of public hearing published in the paper on this issue.
There was a notice of public hearing published, however, the board never set a public hearing.
Okay, so do we need to set a public hearing at this time?
Yeah, so there should be a motion to set a public hearing.
Was there a motion on the table? Do I need to amend it, or is there nothing yet?
There's no motion pending currently.
Okay, well, then I'm going to make a motion to set a public hearing for Mojave County Ordinance Number 2015-01 for 30 days from today.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? And to clarify that motion, the 30-day notice period would actually take... actually take us to our first meeting in March. Is that correct? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Going on to item 50. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, Director of, Director Munger-Chadwick P L C, to move for an evidentiary hearing, trial de novo, to introduce new evidence, ask for expedited ruling on both of the above, and stay the appellate briefings to include expert testimony for additional not to exceed $40,000, equalling an approved $70,000 total engagement amount. This is under County Administrator Hendricks's name. Do you have any comments, Attorney Hendricks, excuse me, County Administrator Hendricks? You guys look like brothers or something, or maybe my vision's going.
It must be.
It's my vision, you're right.
Mr. Chairman, in speaking with Munger-Chadwick, the original contract was for 40, or for $30,000, and that was approved through our procurement department. When they requested that to file the motions for the trial de novo and also filed the motion to introduce additional evidence into this case, into the appeal, they included an estimate of an additional $40,000 to hold the evidentiary hearing, the trial de novo, and to provide any internal expert witness and to prep those witnesses and to go through, forward with that trial. Currently, the motion for trial de novo and the motion to, to introduce additional evidence into this appeal was filed last Thursday and was filed under the original $30,000 that was originally approved for the agreement. However, this, this, this particular agenda item would increase the amount for the total expenditure that Munger-Chadwick would be approved for to $70,000, and include the evidentiary hearing, the actual evidentiary hearing and any additional. So from a staff perspective, this is a, we've had extraordinary, I think, extraordinary progress on this case, on this appeal case. In addition, the trial de novo and the motion to introduce additional evidence is huge because it will increase the, the Mojave County's argument against, for the appeal and against Freeport Minerals. And I've got this item started, if you'd like to discuss it further in the executive session.
Attorney Ekstrom, do you see any need to recuse ourselves to executive session to discuss this item?
Mr. Chairman, I do not.
Okay. Seeing none. Is there any discussion or commentary from the board before I request a motion? I will comment that I have reviewed the work of Munger-Chadwick. They do send us occasional email updates, including pleadings. And in my opinion, the work they have performed has been superior, and I believe the county is in very, in very good hands. So. May I have a motion to approve item 50 of the agenda?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Thank you very much. Going on to item 51. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, authorize the eliminating Public Works Department Engineering Manager Position Number 1023 for construction under Fund 205, Engineering Manager Positions Numbers 1021 for Civil Infrastructure and 200128 for Water System and Transportation, Civil Operations, and further approve salary appointments for Position Number 1021 from Range 26, Step 6 to Step 7.5, and Position Number 200128 from Range 26, Step 5 to Step 6.5, resulting in a total salary expense reduction obligation to Fund 205, HERF, at $25,513 annually, Fund 856, Golden Valley Improvement District, at $19,952 annually, and Fund 850-1I40 Industrial Water, Water Operations, at $19,925 annually. County Administrator Hendricks, this is under your name. If you'd care to elaborate on item 51.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've asked our Director Steve Latauski to be available to answer any questions that the board may have. Basically, what this is, is it's, he's restructuring his department. He's eliminating a position. He's sharing the responsibility of that eliminated position with some of the other, to the other registered professional engineers. So they've agreed to take on this additional responsibility, and he's offering up a salary savings because of the eliminated position to the Board of Supervisors for your consideration.
And as I look at it briefly, and this is just general terms, we're looking at approximately $65,000 to $70,000 in net savings to the budget.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does any member of the Board of Supervisors wish to hear from Director Steve Latauski before I ask for a motion? Your backup detail was very good, Mr. Latauski. Can I have a motion on item 51?
I have a motion to approve item number 51.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Going on to item 52. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, authorize amendment to Section 9.10-B of Mojave County Administrative Procedures Number 404-001 Vehicle Use Program to authorize the position of Engineering Manager, Civil Infrastructure Number 1021, to commute to and from work in a county vehicle on basis of this position's essential support role to Public Works, Business Operations, and emergency response functions to county facilities and infrastructure, coupled with continuous responsibility in managing active construction projects, which generate circumstances demanding immediate site visits to evaluate and resolve critical issues. Again, this is under County Administrator Hendricks's name. Do you have any additional information you'd like to share with the board?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, once again, I've asked our Public Works Director, Steve Latauski, to be available for any questions. Basically, what this is doing, our vehicle use plan and policy identifies every employee who is authorized by the board to take a vehicle home and utilize the vehicle, and generally, it's for emergency responses or special responses that this individual would see as necessary. So this is one of the engineering manager positions that was not included in the vehicle use policy, and this is to try to correct that issue.
No questions, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve. Second motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, I will compliment Mr. Latauski. You do very good work on your information. So you can sit there and not say anything additional. Item 53. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, approve the recommendation of the County Administrator to appoint Carol Lloyd as Mojave County Finance Services Director effective February 17, 2015, Range 29, Step 10, at $120,000 annual salary. Additionally, authorize the county to pay one month's COBRA payment to Ms. Lloyd in the amount of $1,376.75 until Mojave County benefits begin on April 1, 2015. There will be no relocation of costs. We have one person signed to speak on this item, Mr. Steve Robinson. Again, Mr. Robinson, I know it's fairly redundant. If you can give us your name and your address.
Stephen Robinson, 3439 North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. First of Chairman Moss and members of the board, I have a question. When you interviewed people for various elected vacancies, including Supervisor Bishop, there was several people that were interviewed for the vacancy. And when you interviewed for the vacancy of, or the opening for the administrator, there were several people that came before the board. I'm somewhat distressed that there's only one person presented before the board for consideration. I think that it is unfortunate that there wasn't more people, at least to give the Board of Supervisors a chance to opt, to interview several candidates. Unlike the fire board, where statutorily, we have one candidate or one employee, that's our chief, the Board of Supervisors doesn't have a county administrator in any statutory capacity. So some counties have every administrative supervisor in an office answering to the board. Having said that, and at the risk of, of jinxing her, I want to support, I want to heartily endorse and support the selection of Coral Lloyd for this position. As you know, I would study her, the budgets and the, of annual reports. And there's three things I think the City of Kingman has done very well over the last several years. First off, their reporting of general fund balances has been within 5% of the audited figures at the end of the, for the fiscal year that they were, you know, the beginning balances were based on. So that I think, you know, that's an excellent point of, that is good for the people to see how much money the county really has. I hope that practice will continue when she takes position here in Mojave County. Secondly, for, this is their 10th consecutive year of producing a comprehensive annual financial report. The biggest reason I support a CAFER, as it's called, is it's far more disclosing of information for the public. Some people say the public doesn't care. That's not true. The public doesn't understand, I believe, but a lot of people in the public would love to know exactly what is happening with every fund in the county budget. Thirdly, that I, one thing I noticed in their budget is that their internal service fund balances outside their health insurance account, they carry a 24% balance, which is a fair and rational amount for their fund, of their operations. By contrast, when you exclude our health insurance trust, the rest of our internal service funds carry a whopping 130% fund balance. When you have a janitorial fund within their reserve fund, 95% of their budgeted expenditures, that's too much money to be having in a janitorial fund. And the rest of them are just as significant, including the vehicle purchase fund. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. After having those comments, is there anyone who would wish to else to speak, anyone else who wishes to speak to item 53? Seeing none. Do you have a motion on item 53?
Chairman Moss, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the County Administrator to appoint Coral, Coral Lloyd as Mojave County Financial Services Director effective February 17, 2015. And with all the suggestions with this item for approval. I would like to make a comment before I ask for a second, though. Mr. Robinson, I personally met with several of the applicants for this position, so your point is void. Please, when you're making statements like this, talk to one of the supervisors. Talk to us that they're involved. You don't need to make pointless accusations. So with that, that's my motion.
And I believe Supervisor Johnson has seconded it. Is there any further discussion before I call for a vote?
I'd like to make a comment and just welcome Coral Lloyd to the Mojave County family.
All right. Any further comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Item 54. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, the process of employee evaluations and work assignments for OMB and risk management. This is under Supervisor Johnson's name, so I will turn the discussion over to him. Any comments or?
Mr. Chairman, hopefully everybody had a chance to read it. If there's no questions on it, Mr. Hapler could not be here today. He had to go to, we can continue it unless we were comfortable with the information they gave us.
I'll start to my right. Supervisor Angus, any questions?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
No questions.
Supervisor Watson?
I don't have any.
Anything further from Supervisor Johnson? Seeing none, then.
I guess I'd make a motion to approve the process of employee evaluations, work assignments for OMB and risk management.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Would you like to welcome our new hire?
Oh, well, I will say to the members of the public that Supervisor Watson is very good at keeping me polite and civil when I'm just trying to rush forward in one direction. I would like to welcome aboard, aboard Coral Lloyd. I will say that I have asked people I know around the community about you, and you have a stellar reputation. So thank you very much. And I again apologize for that momentary lapse of civility. My excuse is I was trying to make the trains run in, run on time. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.
Thank you.